All right, we're going to open the meeting as a pledge of allegiance. The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, you guys, Dunbar, could you use a roll call, please?
I put it in my pocket, I'll show you.
Tom Ahern, here. Ken Dunbar, here. Barb Barber, here. Ken Riley, Steve Weaver, absent. Kurt Carter, here. Barb Dunsmore, absent. And what was your full name?
John Locke, L-L-C-K-E.
John Locke?
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse the absences.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. We can accept it. All right, adoption and amendment of agenda. So we got this. Planning Commission, we need to do that in our new business. The alert, should be done on the new business.
Actually, that's update the commercial language.
Okay.
It says distract language, but it's district language.
Yes, it does.
So it's already there. I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Okay, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, so the meeting minutes from last month, should be August 9th. Yeah, they do right here, they do remember that.
Okay. Well, if anybody doesn't have any changes to the minutes for August 9th, 2023, I'll make a motion to accept them as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let's see, we have any citizens here today? Well, we're all citizens, but...
Yeah.
You got a point there, Don.
Yeah, okay. Non-commission or non-communities. I don't see anybody there, so we need to just move on from that.
Any communications?
I don't have anything new, anybody else have anything new? All right, so go through that. New business. So we got the bylaws, we do the bylaws, so the one we just have here. That's a resolution. There's something else that you, oh yeah.
The bylaws.
Planning Commission bylaws.
Now, I put it on the agenda, but I don't necessarily expect us to read this line by line. I figured we could spend time over the next month reviewing them ourselves, seeing if we had any thoughts on it. I put the, in the hopes that we liked it, I put the adopted date as next month's meeting, so...
Yeah, I saw that.
But I figured we could spend some time and see if we, if there's anything we dislike or anything like that as a commission.
Are there any major changes that you've put in here?
I would say my largest contribution from from them as presented by MSU would be under the conflict of interest page.
Okay, second page.
Page two.
Decolect the interest and compatibility of office.
Yes, so bullet point two. For issuing, deliberating on, voting on, and reviewing a case concerning work on land owned by the member or which is adjacent to land owned by the member for the purposes of determining a conflict of interest, adjacent shall be land that is within 300 feet or within the legal notice. In the event two or more commissioners are determined to have conflict of interest for owning property within 300 feet, adjacent property shall be property that is contiguous. That was, that was my language. They had just, they had each commission should decide for itself what is conflict of interest and then varies based on your community. The standard is just adjacent properties.
And adjacent being within 300 feet, which, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, so that was, and I put the, we're a relatively small town, so I thought, well, there's a chance that we have an issue where there's two or more members that have lived within 300 feet, so, and that is specific instance, we reduced it down to land that touches.
Okay, you talking about where the new development is?
Yes.
That we did the public hearing on?
Yes, because that was what got me started on it. So in that instance, I think technically Steve and I would have both been within 300 feet, so the conflict of interest would have narrowed down to, does your property touch? And neither of us, neither of our properties touched, so we would have been fine to vote.
Understood.
Okay. Or at least, that's my intent, I'm not a lawyer, so we could definitely run it fast.
No, I think that's fine, I don't think that we need to do that.
Okay. But then, I just went through, and anything that wasn't applicable to us, I changed. There was a couple instances where I made the language a little more concise. I can't remember where exactly, but there was one place that said the next meeting, like four, four times in a row. It was like, if you do not make it to the next meeting, the next meeting, the next meeting.
Right, then you like rescind your seat.
Yes, so I got, I changed that language, but for the most part, I tried to keep it as presented.
Gifts, I see we have gifts on there, so...
I will say, I think there are a couple instances in which this is...
I'm just looking here at page, I don't know if they, I don't know if...
Pages at the top.
Page four. Each member upon appointment shall sign a code of conduct.
Yes.
We don't, I mean, we've never done that.
Right, that was one thing I thought the commission might, might have an issue with. They do, they do provide a sample code of conduct, and it's like one page, and it just says essentially, I will do my homework, I will, you know, show up when I can, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't anything crazy, but I can, we can either remove that language, or I can present that sample code of conduct at the next meeting, if I press the door right now.
Yeah, why don't you, you know, whatever you've got, you know, bring it to us, because that's something good to have on the table, too, because it's one of those, you know, I've done this for a lot of years, and we have members that almost...
Get a little overboard?
Well, or almost never make it.
Yeah.
You know, so...
Right.
The... I do believe, though, that after enacting this, we will have to update our code of ordinances in specific relation to the planning commission. They haven't been updated since they were passed in the 50s.
1956 or something like that.
Yeah. And that, that, they were based on the since repealed act, the 1931 Planning Act. So I, I do think we'll have to look at that updated to be updated to just be more relevant and recent.
And who would do that? Is that something we do, or something do you have?
I think we could make a recommend, we could make a recommendation to council, but they, they would have to do that.
Well, let's go into all that.
You have a different position.
Yep.
And like they voted, we voted July for members or for a committee?
Yes. For the officers.
Right, that's when your...
When your tenure's up.
Yep.
Well, that actually reminds me, I changed some of that language as well. In the, in the, it had said, it was under the assumption that you were going to make your elections in December, and it said upon January 1st, you shall assume your office after being elected. I changed it to upon adjournment of the meeting in which you were elected, because if we call a special meeting a week later...
Yeah, there's nobody in charge.
Yeah, just call it, call it a week in July, so I changed it to upon adjournment.
Sounds good.
So, if you don't mind asking, who have these positions now, and who's who?
Tom's the chair, chairperson, I'm the secretary, and our vice chairperson is currently vacant.
Okay. So Steve Weaver is representative from City Council. Yep. I saw him there. I knew Steve was hanging out.
Sure.
Ken's just hanging out.
Ken just fills a spot.
I was waiting for snacks, neither is supposed to bring snacks.
I would have brought them. Barb has been a perpetual member of this room.
I'm hard in the furniture.
How's his, Ken and you two current days of established?
As far as secretary's duties. Okay, so under section, section 6.8 of the bylaws, there's, anyway, no, I'm missing a bit.
What page do you want there?
I'm, I'm, I'm on page five.
Under secretary duties?
Yeah, and it's one of those, I think, you know, I don't know if there's somewhere here that's spelled out as far as the timeline and getting the minutes in.
Yes.
Okay.
That, actually, I found that there was a legal requirement for them to be available within five days or something, so...
Right, it's generally, it's one of those within a week, per se, because you're Saturday and Sunday, but...
Okay, yeah, so that is, I think that's under, I think there's a specific section of minutes, and I believe it's stated there.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, okay. It's probably spelled out in those sections, so it's like...
Yeah, I need to bring my book today. Now, do we send out notices for our, for the planning commission meetings, or is it just through the city council?
Just the, the plans project.
That's in the paper, and it's also in the City Council.
Just because I found it for it, Kurt. Under section 6A4, proposed minutes shall be made available for public inspection within eight business days after the meeting, and to which the minutes are per the public body shall make approved minutes available for public inspection within five days after the meeting, at which the minutes are approved by the public body.
I wonder if anybody's asked, ever asked for crappy minutes?
I don't know.
Probably not. Even though our work is very important.
American reasons. Some of the stuff is like for large cities.
Mm-hmm.
Does Tom type up these packets and send them out?
Pardon?
Does Tom type up packets and send them out, the clerk?
Typically, I'm on a sheet. I prepared everything for this packet, but otherwise, Nafashi has prepared the objectives.
Yeah, or actually, I think it's mostly Amber and then...
So far, I'm seeing it as pretty cut and dry. He's got a big file to keep all the, all the minutes, permanent record.
On page 11, the executive committee.
Yep.
I'm sorry?
No, I'm with you, yeah, I'm with you.
I, I left that in because it was included, but to be honest, it does not seem like anything that we do currently.
Yeah, I was trying to figure that, what the executive committee is, the same officers as in the committee.
Yeah.
But it's just that they can make decisions without the other members, but only limited to these few things.
Housekeeping, man.
Yeah.
Office boss to oversee, kind of.
So it's something that was probably just in there, you think, or...
I think so, I would assume that they have, I would assume that's for larger...
Yeah.
For la, yeah, larger cities.
Larger cities that are doing things in between meetings, you know, and they're like, all right, these are the, you know, this is what we talked about at the executive committee.
Right.
I don't know if we want to, I don't know if we want to leave that in or exclude that, but I just thought I'd call it off.
And there's only, what, six, seven of us?
Yeah, three, half, there's six.
Then there's nine, plus...
Is that nine? Nine, four.
You know, my desk, under my blotter there, there's a, actually, a quorum count, no.
Oh, nice.
It's always a question, it's like, what's, what counts as a quorum?
Right.
You know, so, it's, it's just like...
That's fine.
Under my blotter.
Is here?
Yep.
Nine numbers, five for quorum, majority of quorum, three. Three to five eights for, for passion. See something?
Now, I just see, this is all the way down to page 17, the committee of planning, special orders, who fulfill the public structures and rules and the general orders are provided, those committee judges will be needed or desired can be undertaken in ensuing six-year period, six-year population study. A lot of stuff is in the master plan.
We get paid mileage? To walk from my house off the road?
That's...
I think we should get paid by steps, not...
Take a while there, I'll tell you.
Really, do we have projects going on right now?
What was that?
I said, do we have projects going on right now? From what I mean, cost of a project, I mean, any, then usually something the council usually goes through.
Yeah, with the roads, you know.
How's the, the houses up on the river, and that going? They still looking forward with those? Are they all sold yet?
They're not cheap.
Well, I know they're not cheap, but...
They're supposed to be building a cross from the ones that are there, too? Is that the plan?
Yeah, there's, there are three houses going there.
And then the other plot that they just, that we just, went through with them, that's still like two years out for that, man.
When's the last time there was that kind of subdivision on this line up a little bit?
That's been a while, some prevented any kind of development like that. We had some proposals, but they just fell through. And there's definitely stuff in here that doesn't apply to us, but it should be a lot bigger now, maybe.
I'm sorry?
I said, there's a lot in here that does not apply to us, and must be a lot bigger.
Which specific?
Oh, just getting to the subdivision stuff. Because we do have a subdivision or a supporting area, kind of any of those. Because we do have a subdivision supporting area, kind of any of what it is. So the plan is to, uh, adopt these bylaws next one?
I mean, we can, we can adopt them whenever we feel comfortable with them, um, I just threw out next month in the hopes of like,
Yep.
let's, you know, put our thoughts together.
So far I don't see anything. So far everything looks good to me.
I mean, if you want to take them home, bring them over and next, uh, meeting, you can...
Yeah. Give us a little bit of homework.
Eric, who wrote down bylaws? Do they have to go to city council?
I don't think so. I'm not sure.
No, we'll just beat this body, but...
Yeah, it's your bylaws.
I guess we just send notification to council that, you know, we have, uh, look more, be any changes and, you know, let them know that we're happy.
And then vote on it October, or you want to vote or...
Well, if you want more time to look at all of it.
So far I'm happy with, um, I mean, the, the draft looks good.
What do you folks would like to do?
I'm not comfortable with what it shows here.
Can always amend them at any point too.
Yep.
Right. Yeah, that's what, yeah, we said at the end here, we can...
But, but at least we would have something at that point.
I mean, some of it is actually, like Kurt said, it's for larger cities.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but it doesn't hurt for us to just have it in there.
Right.
Also don't think it would hurt to take a more active approach with the, with the commission, you know?
Correct.
I think my first two years met once, you know, I think it would, I think it would be beneficial to just keep our finger on the pulse a little more.
Yeah, so I would, uh, I'll make a motion to adopt the, uh, bylaws as written. I don't see any necessary reason to make a change.
Um, I mean, I did notice a few things while reading through that were, uh, relatively small, but if you, if you're happy with them, we could...
What, what other tip, what else?
Are they typos?
Basically typos, yeah.
Just typos.
I, I defined, I defined the planning commission as the commission, and then at a few places I refer to us as the planning commission, and it's just not consistent.
Would you wanna, well then I'll, you wanna make those changes? So that we, I mean, just correct the typos?
Yeah, I can correct it.
And then, uh, we can re-review it in October and then vote on it then?
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds...
Why don't we do that?
And, and, and don't print them up, a million copies.
Yeah.
Just print one.
Give, give us the changes.
Yeah, I, I can put the, I can put the red line first and then...
Yeah, put the red line in Dropbox and then we'll just go through it. And we were not raising a lot of... I mean, I have printers, if we ever need a printer, I have printers.
Yeah.
I can acquire a printer. Okay, so I'll make a motion to, uh, have the secretary make the necessary corrections, and we will, uh, re, bring it back on the table and revote on it in our October meeting for our bylaws.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Alright, master plan. Finished business, we got to make, uh, review anything on the master plan, or do you want to move on from that? And, uh, work on these, uh, overly district language?
Would be nice to at least, um, establish a game plan for further sections, because I believe section two is relatively, relatively done, but I don't know, uh, prior, uh, ch- uh, prior chairperson Henley was going to take a look at section three and with her no longer being having a commission, I'm going to assume that that is no longer being done.
Okay, so we already did, we already did, uh, section two?
Uh, yes, and that is the most, that is the most recent version, and it has, uh, the typed up changes that, uh, councilman Weaver proposed.
Super lucky today.
So I'm looking, I see you have two copies of, uh, the commission resolution, one has a red line, and one is the actual...
Uh, yes, so the, the printer I used this morning did not have, did not color red, had, did not have color ink. The plant, uh, the copy I'm going to sign does have, does have a red ink.
But it looks like it's totally different one of the...
Yes, they, they are totally different.
Oh, okay.
The first one was submitted and then Steve...
So this, this is...
That one can be thrown away, it's not...
Oh, this one here that says in addition, we're going to...
That actually has the red ink and a...
That one that has the red ink can be thrown away.
That's throwaway because, because the, the other one has the, uh...
Has the correct language, it should start with non-conforming.
Yep, I got that, so this one could be scrapped.
Yes.
Alright.
The red line stuff will pitch, is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Yep.
So this one here, in addition to, yep, that one can be scrapped.
That one's ain't, not good.
No good. Alright.
So, so the changes that are on this is all that, uh, the one fifty dot zero five five six eight one. After you got that all straightened around with the language that Steve updated.
Yep.
And our attorney also added another line into that.
Yep.
So everybody happy with that?
That's what I was looking for.
So that was the only language change?
Yeah, that's all he changed, he just added that one portion for, uh, what we had on the other one.
Right, so everything else pretty much is the same.
Yeah, everything else, yeah. That was the only change that, uh, the lawyer saw that he would
Yep.
do to it. I like that line, I like that a lot better, I mean, I, I'm good with it.
Well, I'll make a motion that, uh, we adopt or send the city council, uh, for approval under a recommendation that, uh, chapter one five zero point zero five five A one language to be changed over to what we have here.
Do you not want to make a motion to accept this resolution?
Yeah, I guess so, yeah, about, yeah, make a resolution, the city plan, okay, you got it up.
Alright, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carry.
So this is one that the city council next meeting for approval, and we'll change our code.
And we'll just add it to the book.
Um, so back it up a little bit, review the master plan, I mean, you know, there's, we've got, we've got a lot of loose ends out there. Uh, I think we have to kind of regroup again.
Yeah.
Now that we've lost Leslie, and kind of, I think we need to back up and look and go, okay, we did this, we did this, we did this. I know that you're doing a lot of language work on all this stuff.
I, I think section two's done, so I don't have anything else.
He's our champion right there, he's our trooper, going through all this.
Yeah. And again, it's one of those with the, the, the whole map, we have to get one map. Um, you know, the, the, uh, the master plan has, you know, like eight maps in it, which are future, maybe, kind of what we're doing, and, and even the, the map that we're using for the city right now is outlined as a draft.
Yeah, that's the one that we...
And that has been, I mean, Amber's been going over pretty much parcel, mark parcel to make sure everything is correct, so when we get to a point that's, we want to make that sure, make sure that we have that updated. As far as the rest of the plan, I mean, you know, I mean, we've changed a lot of languages, but I think we get, need to again regroup and say, okay, here's what we've done, what do we have to do next, because I think we're kind of falling back and forth.
Spinning around there a little bit, yeah. That's, you're a good idea.
How many sections are there told to review?
A thousand. Right now we've, uh, it's, it's pretty, yeah, it's...
But there's, 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 you know, a lot of stuff we've updated as far as, you know, there's numbers in there, as far as the community, how many people live in here, and do you even have a copy of the master plan?
I, unless it's in that book, no.
Okay, I mean, it's one of those, if you go to the city's website, you can bring up the master plan.
Perfect.
There, we just, you have to fish around there a little bit, but, um, I think you find it under departments, if I'm not mistaken.
I'll have to get this email and this book.
Yep.
I can give you that one there if you want.
That was only yours. Sixty-three pages.
There's some too bad?
No, and there's stuff that we're, you know, eliminating, and stuff we're updating, and, you know, just changing some of the language and some of the, just eliminating some stuff, period.
Well, here, let me give you the login for Dropbox, that's where, um, we got this here. We have Dropbox where a lot of, um, I call these papers, there's usually a copy in there for you to review. Can make changes, uh, to the master plan, or we make changes, it's always updated. Everybody here is able to get into it. So we got, uh...
To write it down for him.
Yeah, I'm gonna write it down, I'm gonna have to write down the email also, because he has to, when he logs into Dropbox.
He's going to pull out a piece of paper, we don't want it.
Yeah, I know, I'm gonna write it down here.
In his, in his journal.
In his journal.
How would we formulate a motion for the resolution? I'm so sorry.
Got, got distracted.
What would that?
A recommendation for city council to approve the resolution, uh, the city's planning commission, update of chapter one five zero point zero five five of the Memphis, uh, coordinates. And that would be the section one five zero point zero five five dash A one, A and one being parentheses.
Okay. Should have recorded that.
Very, it's, it's very, it's very, very wordy this there.
When's this gonna be on channel six?
Yeah, I'm gonna log it.
When's this gonna be on channel six?
Could have the boxes back to type that one.
He's gonna... Wait, rewind it again.
We get it.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, then I'll make a motion to hold off on the master plans, we get kind of like a little bit more straightened on it, and then we'll reconvene on October eleventh. If, uh, our new members attempt to read it over a little bit.
Yep.
Yeah, and then Steve will be back.
And then Steve will be back also.
And, and may also have, you know, another number too, so...
Correct. So, that's motion to move the master plan to our next meeting, October eleventh.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carry. My other comments from commissioners? Anything else? Mr. Mayor, anything?
Nothing from me.
Riley? Bar?
Nothing.
John?
No.
Mr. Dunbar?
No.
Good.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry, meeting closed at seven twenty P M.